My name is Rachel Landis, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm going to be moderating the panel of City Council candidates for District 6. So this will work very, very similarly to the last round. If you were here for the Manhattan Borough President Panel, if you weren't, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves, and then there will be six minutes of Q and A. We've had questions pre-submitted, but more questions, I believe, can be submitted during the course of the panel. So if you have something, let us know. So to start off, we have our current Borough President, Gao Puer. All I ask is that in your introduction, you remember introducing yourself with your pronouns. And I guess your three minutes for introduction start now.
I can't get in. I don't know why. Let's see. There we go. All right. So anyway, thank you very much, Rachel, and I am honored to be with this new club. It's different in the sense that we used to have three, but I think it's wonderful that you combined. So why am I running? My husband calls it a little insane, and I, you know, maybe it is. But let me tell you why. I can be very specific. When I came to the City Council, I think you know, and we started in 2002, and it was a pandemic in the sense that there was 9/11. In fact, the day that we ran for office was the day that the tragedy horrific took place at the World Trade Center. And then that was postponed, and we ended up having the election sometime later. And I was elected January 2002. There were many new members, so it was a similar situation. Now we have 2021, we have a horrible pandemic, and we have new members. So in between that and now, I've obviously had 12 years in the City Council and eight years as Borough President. And what I'm trying to say is that the reason I'm running is that I think, given the fact that there are going to be a lot of new members, and given the fact that between the zoning, small business, schools, all the issues of affordable housing, I think I can contribute with some knowledge as to so we don't make mistakes of the past. And goodness knows, we have to move forward on some of the challenges. So whether it's schools, the mom and pops, the housing, and trying to figure out on data, how can we do differently using the resources that we have? I mean, I would even do some of the technology differently, how we present to the world, the City Council, on live television and streaming. I would also work hard on having hearings that somehow involve the technology that we've learned from, but also have a better sense of back and forth. There are so many experts, and to listen just to the administration is a challenge. Or how can you have a better dialogue on police-community relations, for instance? So the reason I'm running, and it is an unusual situation, is that with this kind of experience, I think I can add a lot to what is said and discussed in a time when we have to figure out how the economy, issues of equity, and certainly issues of health have to be restarted in this city. Yes, we're going to have a wonderful group of New Yorkers who are strong and are going to bounce back, but it's going to take perhaps four years, certainly for 65 million tourists to come back, and perhaps for the jobs, we're 10% occupancy in Midtown right now. So I'm running on a knowledge base. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that introduction. Now we're going to dive into some Q and A. So my first question for you has to do with the COVID pandemic and its economic effects on the city. Obviously, NYC has had trouble receiving federal aid so far. And assuming that New York City continues to not receive enough in federal aid, what are your plans to support current small businesses throughout the city and more specifically on the Upper West Side, as well as raise more revenue for the city generally?
Okay. Well, there's two issues. You've got the mom and pops, the revenue, and they have to figure out how to have good jobs at the same time and jobs that give people sustenance for the future. So in terms of the revenue for the city of New York, it has to be a, obviously, a thorough redoing of the city budget. Now, today, the Independent Budget Office, interestingly, said we're not in as bad shape this year, but it will be next year. For the fiscal year starting in two years, essentially, we'll be really bad. I was on the Finance Committee. I was the head of the Manhattan delegation in the City Council, and I have spent millions of dollars in capital money. Has to be much more transparent than it was in the past, even in the last eight years with Mayor de Blasio. This budget is not transparent. So the first thing you have to do is have a serious transparency, capital and expense. And then you have to figure out what your essential services are, right? Obviously, you hear police, fire, sanitation. But you have to figure out there are some services and some agencies that I think should not exist, and they could be listed. So you've got to cut, but you don't cut across the board. You don't cut education. You don't cut some of the healthcare. So you figure out what are your essential services, and then you can make other kinds of cuts. Contracts, we hear about it all the time. People hire because they can't get it done through the process of hiring. Or, for instance, and Kim knows this as well, all of the specialized services that kids need takes forever to hire. So they end up doing it through a contract, outside contractor. So you look at all of these. That's the only answer I can give you, Rachel. You hope for federal and you hope for state. And then you can talk if there is the billionaires taxes or if there is more money, kind of Albany, but that doesn't take care of the entire thing. In terms of small mom and pops and good jobs, that's where the good jobs are. They start local. And so you have to work with all of those. Getting rid, as you heard earlier, of the commercial rent tax, particularly for storefronts from Murray up to 96th Street. You have to think of the commercial tenants right now, low rents. But how do you figure out how to bring in some mom and pops so you don't end up with some national chains? Those are some of the ways I would do it. You have to do it through zoning. You have to do it through, we have a bill that I passed due February that says every store has to be listed on the Open Data Portal, which is the bill that I passed, in terms of their vacancy. That's a law that actually took place before the pandemic. That'll give us the data, and just like everybody else, I'm a huge data nerd in terms of knowing the information. Then you'll know where are the storefronts, where we can work with locals, and where we can figure out where some kind of economic process makes sense.
Thank you so much for your answer. My next question is, how will you handle the difference in City Council, particularly in relation to U-LAR processes?
Rachel, you timed out a little bit. I heard the last part in terms of U-LAR process. You know, what was the first part?
Sorry. It was how you handle the practice of member deference within the City Council.
Okay, got it. All right. So obviously, I have perhaps more land use experience than anybody I know. We've done almost 200 U-LARs, and I've done, you know, East Midtown, East Harlem, Inward, Garment Center, South Street Seaford, Soho, NoHo, East Side, and the list goes on in terms of major land use planning decisions, and they're hard. So the fact that Corey Johnson, with others, I'm sure, managed to introduce a comprehensive planning document is where we should go. It is good to do 197A plans, but in Board 9, where Mark Wabie is the council member, that board did a 197A plan, and Columbia University just rolled all over them. So you do need something more comprehensive. I did pass a bill that got us a Charter Vision Commission. And to be honest with you, we passed a few things as a result on the November ballot, like giving more tea to the CCRB, but it was a disaster on land use. The discussion that you heard about this bill in the City Council is what we wanted to come out of the Charter Vision Commission, and the members appointed by the mayor were 100% against it, and so we were not able to pass it. But that kind of comprehensive discussion, planning, is what's needed. So then you didn't have to deal with, is it my area or is it something more important because you have a plan? We have no plan now. It's whoever can, you know, either you have private plans, recommended, or public plans, but there's no planning. Go ahead. I'm fine.
Okay. Okay. Thank you again for your answer to that question. Here's a question that was specifically asked of you. If you are to win reelection to your seat, would you seek out the City Council speakership or another leadership position?
You know, everyone who knows me knows I do everything at the last minute, and I never make it know what I'm doing tomorrow. So the answer is, I hope to get elected to the City Council, and then we will see. I am not going to make any commitment because I have to get elected first. And some people just, you know, I'm not ambitious to be the speaker. I'm ambitious to get the work done. So the question is, how do you get the work done?
Okay. Thank you. And I know we don't have very much time left, but last question for you is, how would you improve public transportation and open space and try to move us away from a car-centric New York City?
Well, I feel very strongly about the open space. We are actually going to be releasing a report on that. During this pandemic, there is very little silver lining, but one of them was open space. And as a result, it's not so much, we had one here on the Upper West Side, on West End Avenue, but Pleasant and 101st Street and University. There were lots of places where the open space really worked because it was programmed. And there were places to eat, and there were things to do, whether it was art classes, Zoom classes, et cetera. Here on the Upper West Side, on West End Avenue, the cops almost arrested people who took up, for instance, doing podcasts and enjoying the sunshine with the community because they were told that it's not appropriate to do anything in open space. Well, that's ridiculous. So the whole open space issue has to be revised, and then I think it would make sense. I'm very supportive of open space, and I've opened, I love, I've always supported the bike lanes, and I think there should be many more closed streets to traffic.
Okay. Thank you so much for your answer to that question. Unfortunately, that was all of our time for tonight. So thank you so much for taking this time to be with us. And we will be moving right along to our next candidate.
Thank you very much, Rachel.
Oh, thank you so much.
Take care.
And we will be moving right along to our next candidate for City Council, Ms. Sarah Lynn. Again, all I ask is that you introduce yourself with your pronouns. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you all so much for being here and for having me. My name is Sarah Lynn. My pronouns are she/her. Many of you here know me. I've been a member of West Side Dems previously, CFD, for about four years now. And it's been great getting to know a lot of you here through, you know, our meetings and serving on the board back at CFD, County Committee and those wild committee meetings, petitioning to other phone banking, et cetera. So it's been an honor being part of this amazing club. But just a little more about me. I'm a former corporate and immigration attorney. I was a policy consultant for the CIA. I co-founded the Empower Project. I've run several political campaigns in the city. And most recently, I was the Executive Director for 21 and 21. And I'm also a mom with two school-aged children. Here in the neighborhood, I serve as a member of Community Board 7. I'm on the school leadership team at PS 166, where my son goes to school. I'm a liaison to the 20th Precinct at the NYPD. And in the city, I was a member of the Citywide Participatory Budgeting Committee, among lots of other things. And these experiences have taught me that no neighborhood is immune from citywide problems. Well before COVID hit, we had blocks of empty storefronts, homeless encampments, severely outdated transportation and waste management systems, and an education system that fails too many kids. And now with COVID, obviously, things are much worse, and we have, you know, economic problems. And honestly, it really is upsetting to me because it doesn't have to be this way. I think everyone in the district can agree, for example, that Broadway with its blocks of empty storefronts and blight is a major issue. But I believe that we can transform it into a grand boulevard using some creative zoning and pedestrian enhancements so that it's a street you want to walk down, not one that, at least I know, I kind of avoid. And so we have to support our small businesses by driving foot traffic to the street, which will create a thriving retail and arts and culture district. And another critical issue, obviously, is housing and homelessness. Look, right now, we're spending billions of dollars on a shelter system that basically just perpetuates homelessness. We heard a lot about it in the Borough President Forum. But look, it is possible to end homelessness. We know this because other cities in the world have done it. We just have to prioritize permanent affordable housing for everyone, including sometimes supportive housing with addiction and mental health treatment for those who need it. And just more generally, we need to make the city affordable for just regular people. I mean, when I tell my friends outside of the city how much I pay for rent, they're just astounded. I live in a market-rate apartment. It's insane. But it is possible to stabilize normal market-rate apartments that don't break the bank. I released a housing plan that was covered by the city and Politico that shows how we can protect and create the housing that we need, not the luxury supertalls that we don't. And of course, we have to continue to fight for funding for NYCHA so we can fulfill the promise of public housing. I believe that great public education is the foundation of a democracy, which, as we've seen in the last few days, is fragile. And in this city, families worry in this neighborhood.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but we are at three minutes. So if you could just finish your thought, then we can go on to Q and A.
Sure. And then, you know, I think that climate change is an existential crisis. So we need to take bold action to address it. New York City should be a leader, and instead, we're falling behind. And I believe that all of this is within reach. We just need to be bold and progressive and be, you know, ready to create a 21st century city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that introduction. I'll be asking a very similar set of questions as I did for the last candidate. So like I said earlier, New York State and New York City especially have struggled in not receiving the amount of federal aid needed to combat the COVID crisis economically. So assuming New York City does not, continues to not receive enough in federal aid, what would your plan be to support current small businesses in the city, but specifically on their Upper West Side, and generally raise more revenue for this?
Sure. So like I said, I think we can do really simple things, actually, to create the commercial corridors that people want to be on, and that then if we drive that foot traffic to our small businesses, that will help support them. So that's a simple thing. But more broadly, in terms of the economy as a city, I think we need to be investing in a Green New Deal, tackling, you know, our climate crisis, and creating good union jobs that support the economy. If you put that investment, that infrastructure investment, into, you know, building new environmentally friendly housing, updating our transportation systems, you know, building out a sustainable, resilient city, you also create jobs, and that boosts the economy. So it becomes, it pays for itself, and we need to be investing in a Green New Deal. And I believe that we need to reform our property tax system so the wealthiest among us are paying their fair share.
Thank you so much for your answer to that question. So how would you personally, if elected, handle the practice of member deference within the City Council, particularly in relation to U-LAR processes, but also more generally?
Yeah, absolutely. So very similar to the Borough President. I absolutely support a comprehensive zoning, comprehensive planning process. I think that there's, you know, small, I think that everyone should, of course, listen to the member from the district because they know the district best. But it's a fact that what happens in one neighborhood in the city affects the entire city. And so you can't be making these piecemeal decisions that keep pushing the problem down the road. We need to be tackling these problems at a citywide level and taking into account how what we do in one neighborhood affects everyone else. So I think that if we can get the comprehensive planning process kicked off, that's the best way to tackle that. But in lieu of that, I would also not always defer to member deference.
Thank you again for such a succinct answer. Moving right along, what would you do to improve public transportation, open space, and move us away from a car-centric New York City Upper West Side?
Absolutely. So, you know, as I've said several times now, I, the climate crisis is really one of the key frames of my campaign and why I'm running for office. So I do believe that we need to, you know, as much as possible, get people out of cars. I don't think that, you know, I think we have to respect the people who need them and make the transition so that it works. And one of the ways of doing that is creating a really robust public transportation system that works for people. So, you know, bus service is really important and is something we can do at the City Council level. You know, I love the subway. The trains, I think, are great. But especially on the Upper West Side, they're not always accessible. So for people who, you know, have mobility issues, they can't always get to a train. And the buses, you know, can be more nimble and can go many different places. So we should be really creating a very robust bus system. And I'm in favor of bus lanes so that our buses can move quickly. I think that if people felt like they could get, you know, where they needed to go on a quick bus that would get them there, they would feel less like they needed to rely on a car. And then I also am in favor of, you know, bike lanes and open space. I think, again, just creating many different alternatives for people to get where they need to go. But we always have to, of course, also be making sure that bikers are respectful and sharing the road. Pedestrians are the top priority in this city. So that's definitely my top priority.
Okay. Thank you again. My next question for you is, what would you do to prevent cops from taking over pavement and being idling vehicles within our neighborhood?
Sorry, you said police? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. What would you do to prevent the issue of police taking over pavement and having idling vehicles on the street?
Yeah, 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 definitely. I mean, it's, that's a great point. Any idling vehicles are, you know, a problem for the environment and just for our health. The particulate matter impacts people's health. You know, more kids in the city have asthma, et cetera. And of course, you know, whose streets are streets? So we want to be able to access our public space. So I think, you know, we need, when you ask the police to enforce themselves, that's always tough, right? So I have called on DOT to have some more enforcement power over our streets. Obviously, anything that might involve, you know, serious violence or danger should be the province of the police. But when it comes to, you know, enforcing traffic, I think that should be under the DOT. So I would, and then maybe they could do some of that enforcement.
Okay. Thank you again. My, what can be done about all the vacant storefronts on the Upper West Side? And how would you reimagine and redevelop our commercial districts?
Yeah, definitely. So to get specific, I have proposed an idea for Broadway, which I think is our, you know, worst commercial corridor right now, as I briefly mentioned. Honestly, I will, I will avoid it. You know, if I'm going somewhere, I'd prefer to walk down Columbus or go over to West End Avenue. It's just, it's not, it's not great. So I think there's, especially the northbound lanes of Broadway North of 73rd, because of the way that you, you have to turn off of Amsterdam to get back onto Broadway, a lot of vehicles don't make it, don't make that turn. They wait, and they turn back to Broadway later. So there's a lot of open space there that I think could be really utilized as a dedicated bus lane, because the buses do make the turn and go up it. And then some extra pedestrian space with, you know, seating and green space, little parks. I think it's a great opportunity to create kind of the place that people want to walk. And when you get people going to a place like that, they're stopping, they stop in little small businesses, and it supports small businesses. And then I also, you know, some of the zoning right now, I think, is not reflective of our new economy, our new kind of very experiential-based economy. And so making some zoning changes to allow innovative new businesses to come in and fill those storefronts, I think, would be really essential.
Okay. Thank you so much. Oh my God, I've run out of time there. Only six seconds left. I'm so sorry. But thank you so much for taking the time to speak with us tonight.
Thanks.
Okay. So our next candidate that we will be hearing from this evening is Mr. Jeffrey Omura. Once again, all that I ask is that you remember to introduce yourself with your pronouns, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Rachel. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Jeffrey Omura. My pronouns are he/him. I'm an artist, an activist, and a labor leader. Recently re-elected to my second term as an Officer of Actors Equity Association, representing more than 50,000 stage managers and actors nationwide. I came to labor leadership through member organizing as a founding member of Fair Wage on Stage. It's a movement and a campaign which helped secure record-breaking wage increases in Equity's collective bargaining agreement with our off-Broadway employers. And not long after, I was elected as a union officer, and I've been organizing from the inside ever since, including recently helping to lead and win Equity's first strike in over 50 years. As a labor leader, I've seen firsthand the devastation Equity's members and all of the city's arts workers have faced during this pandemic. It's unlike anything we've ever seen. In this past summer, I realized that the arts community was being left out of the relief conversation at every level of government. So I helped create a new campaign, Be an Arts Hero. Our organizers met with over 60 US Senate offices and were instrumental in securing $15 billion in direct arts relief, found in the most recent federal relief package. But here in New York, with its biggest advocates on the City Council term limited, the arts and culture sector is at risk of being left without a voice in city government at a time when we and the entire city need it most. My fellow arts workers and my entire industry need a champion. And given the extraordinary impact that the arts and culture sector has on the city's economy, a New York City economic recovery will require an arts and culture renaissance. Now, in my work as a union officer, I've learned that good policy will only get you so far, and that success is only possible if your workers are behind you. Educating, organizing, and galvanizing a constituency is something those of us in labor specialize in. Our district has some pressing issues, and not just as a result of the pandemic. The vacant storefronts, segregated schools, a lack of affordable housing, and the needs of our neighbors experiencing homelessness are not new to the Upper West Side. COVID-19 has only exacerbated these problems and increased the temperature in our discourse between neighbors in the process. Too many in our community feel ignored, abandoned, and talked down to by their leaders in city government. Small business owners tell me I'm the first person who's come to ask how they're doing. Yollet, a young woman I met in the Amsterdam Houses, simply said, "No one cares about us over here." I have a list of policy proposals, and I'm happy to talk about them. But what I truly hope to be, and what I truly believe District 6 needs, is a neighborhood organizer. And using my skills and strengths, not only as a labor leader, but as an artist, a listener, a storyteller, that's exactly what I'm running to become and to hopefully bring some unity back to District 6 in the process. If elected, I will proudly be the openly gay person ever to represent District 6 in the City Council, and believe it or not, the first Japanese-American ever elected to public office in the entire state of New York. Again, I'm Jeffrey Omura. I'm an artist, activist, and labor leader, and I look forward to earning your support.
Thank you so much for your introduction. We're going to move right into the Q and A portion. You'll have six minutes to answer as many questions as I can ask you in that time. They are going to sound familiar. So first and foremost, on the COVID pandemic, like I said before, New York State and New York City especially have had difficulty in receiving the amount of federal aid that we really need in order to economically recover. So assuming New York City continues to not receive the aid that we need, what would be your plan to support current small businesses in the city and more specifically on the Upper West Side, as well as generally raise more revenue for the city?
Great. So I'll talk about revenue first. And we're going to have to have a multi-pronged approach here. I would support modernizing the sales tax to include all goods and services sold online. We should start taxing all digital advertising, which has become one of the largest businesses. We need to legalize and tax marijuana, both at the state and the city level. We need a pied-à-tier tax for all of these empty luxury apartments. I could potentially support municipal assistance corporation bonds, which is a form of borrowing. And of course, we need to start taxing our ultra-millionaires and our billionaires on their wealth. To help our small businesses, we need to make sure that they have access to PPP loans. I've talked to a lot of small business owners, many of whom have language barriers because they're immigrants. And they have really struggled to get the PPP loans they need. They are a vital lifeline for their businesses. We need to reform our commercial property taxes. Those property taxes are passed down to the business owners in form of rent. And it's, you know, they, they won't survive unless we can lower their rents. We also need to void these minimum rent provisions in mortgages. Some of these, some of these mortgages that the landlords have won't let them reduce rent below a certain threshold. It's considered a default on their mortgage. So this, we need to work with the state to void these minimum rent provisions to lower rent. We also need to incentivize mom-and-pop shops. We can do this with tax breaks to business owners who have three or fewer locations so that they can compete with large chain stores. And then I think a big priority has to be eliminating regulatory hurdles. It's extremely complicated, starting and maintaining a business. I want to create a single point of contact, customer service liaison for all of our small businesses. So there's just one person that they, they have to interact with who can answer all of their regulatory questions and walk them through the regulatory process.
Thank you so much for your answer. My next question for you is, how would you handle the practice of member deference within the City Council, particularly in relation to U-LAR processes, but also more general?
Sure. So I think member deference, it's one of the greatest powers that any City Council member might have. I support comprehensive planning, but I think we need to include the community in all of our planning processes, especially the U-LAR process. Our developments need to be transparent and inclusive and include community input. That's something that I have a little bit of experience doing. This is the way that we do it with our union. We need to get, we need the membership onboard when we implement new changes, especially when it comes to something as important as development within our neighborhoods. So, you know, I support comprehensive planning, but I'm eager to bring the community onboard.
Again, thank you so much for a very nice answer. Continuing right along, how would you improve public transportation and open space within the city and on the Upper West Side, more specifically to move us away from a car-centric New York City?
I think we have to redesign our streets entirely. We can turn 57th Street, 72nd Street, 96th Street into priority busways. We need to expand express bus service and select bus service. We can facilitate faster and more reliable bus service by installing transit signal priority software at all of our intersections. It's software that can, you know, it knows when the cars are coming, so cars don't sit idly at intersections. And it also reduces, it reduces traffic, it reduces pollution. It's good all around. Car ownership has actually risen during the pandemic. So I think we need to prioritize creating a parking permit system. It's kind of crazy that we don't have one in the city already to prioritize parking for the residents, for people who actually live here as opposed to commuters. And then we need to expand bike lanes and, you know, I think that, I think that's a pretty good start to, to improving our transportation systems.
Thank you again for your response. My next question for you is, what can be done about all of the vacant storefronts on the Upper West Side? And how would you reimagine and redevelop our commercial districts?
Sure. You know, I mentioned some of the ways that we can reduce rent so that they can, so that small business owners can afford to stay in our neighborhoods. I think we're redesigning our streets to increase foot traffic. Along our, our commercial corridors would be a great way to do that. Our, what we experienced during the pandemic with outdoor seating can be instrumental in how we redesign our streets to make sure that our restaurants have plenty of room for seating to maximize profits. And we, you know, again, we need to eliminate regulatory hurdles to make it easy as possible so that anyone can start a business in the city.
Thank you so much. My next question for you is, what would you do to prevent the NYPD from taking the over-pavement parking and having idling vehicles in the neighborhood?
So we're, we're going to have to have some conversations with the NYPD when this new city council is elected. It was probably not the best time to do it in, in the height of, of the protest this, this past summer. And we're going to need some long-term planning. But I, you know, I look at these issues from the perspective of a labor leader. I, I'm eager to speak to the NYPD as a union officer, and I'm eager to speak to their union leadership eye to eye to see where we can, where we can develop a relationship, where we can talk and listen to each other and in really make sure that the community's needs are heard. I, I think it comes down to building relationships and having conversations.
Okay, thank you so much. Unfortunately, that is all the time we have for tonight, but thank you for coming to share with us.
Great. Thank you so much, Rachel. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. So again, moving along to our next candidate, we have Mr. Zach Weiner. Again, all I ask is that you introduce yourself with your pronouns, and you have three minutes.
Hi, hello, everybody. I'm Zach Weiner. I'm running for city council. And I'm really excited to be talking tonight. This is, this is a big night for our city. It's a big campaign. It's really a crossroads for us. The way I see it, there's two issues facing our neighborhood that are paramount. There's the homelessness crisis and there's the empty storefronts. We're looking at huge problems on both fronts. The Lucerne is a disaster. It's a catastrophe. Four homeless men have died at Lucerne during this entire episode. Four. I'm not sure that's even common knowledge. Treatment's not being provided. The, the services are not being provided. Public safety has gone down. When I say public safety has gone down, I'm not talking just about the permanent neighbors. I'm talking about for the people that are at the Lucerne, who are feeling endangered, and I'm speaking to them, and they're very concerned and very worried. It's a total failure of the system and it's emblematic of a much bigger issue that's been going on. So I have a four-pronged plan to deal with that, which is available on my website, and I can go into more detail. I know some of the questions haven't addressed that, but I don't know if we're changing questions. So that's the first thing. That's first and foremost. Secondly, on the topic of storefronts, we have so many empty storefronts. They were empty before COVID. There are even more that are empty now. And we got to try something new. You know, I'm really hopeful that the Democrats, now that they control the Senate, thank God, are going to be bailing us out and doing what they need to do and what should have been done nine months ago and provide relief to businesses that had no other option right now but to close and to suffer. I really hope they do that, and I believe they will. That being said, it's going to take more than that to fill these stores. These stores were struggling before COVID. They were struggling before a lot of these issues because of Amazon, because of, of other trends that are rising. I have an answer for that. I have something novel. It's called Startup Retail. And it's a revenue sharing agreement between entrepreneurs and landlords, where the entrepreneur will be able to pay for the utilities and pay 10% of their revenue to the landlord. It would be short-term leases. We're seeing a lot of interest from landlords. I'm speaking to landlords personally. This is something I've already got the ball rolling on. It's a trend that's already growing in the real estate industry. And what does it mean? It means that, it means that we have a situation where a lot of these stores can be filled right away, promptly, and continuously. And it's also a huge opportunity for people that have up until now been unable to open stores. That have, there's been a barrier for so many parts of our community as a city that have never been able to engage in commerce. And we could take this huge issue that's so intractable of permanently empty storefronts and turn it into an opportunity for people that couldn't have afforded the rent, that couldn't have gotten the loan, that couldn't have taken the chance. And now we'll be able to and be able to sell food and art and clothes and make something that's good for the neighborhood, good for their customers, and good for them. Back to the homeless issue, it's part of a larger issue, which is treatment. Housing is super important. Housing is something that every single person deserves and needs, of course. I don't think any good-hearted. I see I have a seven seconds. Essentially, treatment, treatment has to be updated. We have to do a lot better. We have $850 million that's being wasted right now, and I'm going to change that. That's going to change, and I want to be a part of that change. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, many of these questions will be similar, and you'll have six minutes to answer as many questions as I can throw at you in that time. So first, as I said before, New York State and New York City have not been receiving the federal aid we've needed to economically combat the COVID crisis. So assuming that New York City does not, continues to not receive enough federal aid, what would be your plan to support current small businesses, specifically those that already exist on the Upper West Side, as well as raise more revenue for the city generally?
So like I started before, the startup retail plan is something I'm really excited about, and I really think it could be something huge. There's a lot of steps otherwise that the government's going to have to take, including like Jeffrey mentioned, we may need to take on some debt. It's impossible for us to have a city without commerce. I mean, it's inconceivable. It's the entire appeal is small business and walking downstairs and getting what you want. So there's a lot of parts of the government, the place where I believe I can move the needle, the place where I could believe I could be of service to my neighborhood, is through startup retail, through establishing relationships with a variety of landlords and negotiating with them to either allow for startup retail or to start negotiating with the bank and getting the bank to understand we have to find some compromise. Because the banks, as Jeffrey noted before, and something Jeffrey and I have discussed, the banks are being really strict on the mortgages, and they're making it basically impossible for the landlords to lower the rent. A lot of landlords, believe it or not, want to lower their rent and can't, and that's going to go a long way. So those are, those are my main ideas. And everybody, please email me, by the way, if you want to discuss more. I'd love to talk all the time, anytime, so please email me. Thanks, yeah.
Okay, I thank you so much for that answer. My next question for you is, how will you handle the practice of member deference within the city council, particularly in relation to the U-LERT processes, but also more generally?
I'm going to do it on a case-by-case basis. I really believe in neighborhood-focused work and really investigating the needs of everyone in the neighborhood. It's something I've started doing in this campaign. I'm talking to shareholders throughout, not just every citizen, but representatives of different buildings, at Frederick Douglass House and Amsterdam House, and, and police officers just on an individual level. And that's something I want to see with every single landzoning issue. I want to understand where's the neighborhood at? What do they want? What are they trying to get? And that's how I'm going to vote. So don't expect me to follow any kind of precedent or any kind of loyalty to something like that. I'm just going to try to do what's best every single time.
Okay, thank you so much again for your answer. My next question for you is, how would you improve both public transportation and open space to move us away from a car-centric New York City and Upper West Side?
It's so important that we make the city green. I'm terrified a lot of times, frankly, about the future of the world. And we're, and we're in so many ways the, the symbol of what can be done as a civilization. So we got to see a lot of progress. That being said, 27% of our neighborhood own cars. They're primarily middle-class people who cannot afford private parking. So I'm really open to a lot of different ideas, and I'm really looking hard at a lot of different ideas. But I'm also doing something that unfortunately I'm not hearing from the other candidates, which is talking to the car owners and trying to figure out an arrangement where they're going to be able to cope with this. Because already it's coming on the heels of an economic and health disaster. We, we, we need to account for them. It's a third of our residents. Almost 27%. I'm better at math than that. I'm not amazing, but I'm better than that.
Okay, I thank you so much for that answer. My next question for you is, what would you do to prevent the NYPD from taking over our pavement parking and, you know, having idling vehicles all throughout the neighborhood?
I'll be honest, I wasn't so knowledgeable on, on, on the presence of the issue in terms of the idling, but I have talked to officers throughout the neighborhood, as well as stakeholders on the blocks and representatives. And so that's something I want to do on a, on a daily basis, and I've already started doing, is talking to them and facilitating communication between people and trying to figure out better practices. I think it's got to be at a precinct level and an officer level to figure out how this works. Because we are undergoing, unfortunately, a tremendous crime spike, as I described before. And a lot of the people that are suffering are most vulnerable. They're, they're homeless people who are being really, really hurt. So I don't want them to idle, but I do want them to do good work. So again, I'm going to try to navigate that.
Again, thank you so much for your response. My next question for you is, what is your viewpoint on the issue of closing the city heliports to non-essential helicopters? And more generally, how can we best end the growing problem of helicopter noise pollution from these non-essential helicopters?
Oh, my God, those helicopters are so annoying. I hear them all the time. They're so loud. I'll be honest, I haven't fully investigated the best plans for that, but that's definitely something I have heard from people. And it's something I'm going to really be active in. I know that's a concern of my neighborhood, so it'd be a concern of mine. Hopefully, I'll be able to get back to you soon with a more formulated answer on that one.
Okay, thank you so much. This is a good time. I obviously have more questions. I'll get back to them in a second. But just because I've noted we haven't been getting many thus far, I just want to remind all of our participants that you are allowed to type questions into the Q and A box. If you feel like there's something I'm not hitting, there's a question you'd like to see asked, please put it in the Q and A box. It's here for you. But my next question would be, do you accept campaign contributions from real estate developers or their industry representatives?
I don't accept campaign contributions from almost anyone, honestly. I have small campaign contributions that I'm asking for on my website, one to $5. And other than that, I'm not looking for money from PACs or special interests or anything like that. I'm doing a lot of it through cooperation with friends, a large volunteer force. I'm producing my own ads. I'm getting a lot of volunteer buy-in. I'm looking to spend as little money as possible, frankly, and I'm, I'm not accepting donations now from, from them now.
Okay, thank you for your answer. I think you have run me down to my last pre-prepared question, which is, as you mentioned before, obviously, many people in the neighborhood own cars and, you know, have a difficult time parking. It leads to overcrowdedness, difficulty for people who are trying to get to work within the neighborhood who maybe aren't just able to walk or bike. So what would you do to increase the accessibility of parking within the neighborhood for those who need it?
It's a really good question. I think that's, that's a really good question. I think we're going to have to strike a balance, obviously, and start trying to get a little more creative. I am talking to a company that previously before this was a ride-sharing company and has now transitioned to urban planning, sort of contracted urban planning around transportation. They have some really exciting algorithms from Israel that are amazing. So I'm doing my best to figure it out, but I'm also looking forward in the coming weeks to releasing some details on that. I think that there are some really creative, smart ways to, to do better on that without making anyone too upset. No one likes to lose parking. I don't have a car, but I know people like parking. So we're going to work that out. We're going to work that out.
Okay, we have a question from the Q and A from an anonymous attendee. So this question is just, what's your track record of engagement with public policy issues within the Upper West Side community?
My track record is I've been attending the meetings for over a year. I've been involved with a lot of activism in the neighborhood. I've lived here my whole life, specifically around treatment for drug addiction, mental illness, and homelessness. Not at a policy level, but it's more of an organizational level. I am, but I studied it in school. I'm a history major. My main focus always was researching a lot of this stuff, urban design. Robert Moses, I know, very, very awful, but I read a lot about him and Jane Jacobs, and so I, I'm a student of this, and now I'm hoping to put into practice.
Okay, okay, sorry, I forgot to unmute. Thank you so much. Unfortunately, that's all the time we have for this evening. But thank you so much for coming to share with us.
Oh, thank you, Rachel. Thank you, everybody. It was so exciting to be here with you. And again, please email me, zachweiner.com. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to our final candidate of the evening, we have Mr. David Gold. Again, all I ask is that you introduce yourself with your pronouns, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, David Gold, he/him. I'm running because we're at a rare moment when there's not only a need for real change, but also a hunger for real change. And I think we need to think really big and really creatively about it. So I want to say three things to you tonight. First, who I am. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I grew up in the neighborhood. So did my wife. We've raised two amazing boys here. The older one is in college. He went to New York City Public Schools. And the younger one is a New York City Public High Schooler now. And your grandparents all still live in the neighborhood, too. I'm a lawyer and a PhD, and I run a nonprofit organization called Democratism. Second, I share your values and I have the skills to fight for them. I think clearly. I have good judgment. I'm skilled at analyzing laws and regulations and their effects. I do numbers and budgets. I have a deep understanding of the neighborhood, but I also like to listen to people and I like to learn. And as a council member, I'm going to fight in every way for affordable housing, anti-racist law enforcement, environmental sustainability, high-quality desegregated schools, aid to local businesses, and a resurgence in the arts. Third, it's not enough to believe in these things or just to fight for them in the same old ways. The old ways have not alleviated our housing crisis. They haven't desegregated our schools. They haven't saved our small businesses, even though we elect politicians who want to achieve these goals. Why? Because the mechanisms of our democracy, the tools that voters and politicians use to translate what we care about into reality are failing us. Now is our chance to change that. I propose two specific improvements to our democracy that would dramatically improve our trajectory. The first is something I call democratic resource allocation. You can think of it as a lot like participatory budgeting, but bigger, like on steroids. It would allow us to address a wide range of longstanding problems, including the death of local businesses and New York City's housing crisis and many others. The other is to make New York City the leader of what must be a local government-led national movement to remove the right-wing bias from our federal election system, to get rid of the Electoral College and make Congress democratic. The way that we elect presidents in Congress isn't just undemocratic, it's specifically anti-city. It's also white supremacist. It's the cause of what happened yesterday in Washington. It's propelling us toward climate catastrophe. It's a loaded gun pointed at New York City. The federal government cannot fix itself. It requires a movement of cities. And I have a plan for how to make that happen, and it starts in New York City Council. For more on these proposals, please visit my website, davidgold.nyc. Be in touch with me. Thank you very much. I think that's probably my time. You're signaling. Is that what you're signaling? I'll be thrilled to receive the club's endorsement if you give it to me, and I'm delighted to answer questions.
Okay, thank you so much for your introduction. Again, many of these questions will be similar to ones I've asked earlier in the evening. And your job is just to answer as many of them as I can throw at you in the next six minutes. So as I've said before, New York State, New York City especially, have not been receiving the federal aid we need to economically recover from the effects of the COVID pandemic. So assuming New York City continues to not receive the federal aid we need, what would be your plan to support current small businesses throughout the city, but more specifically on the Upper West Side, as well as generally raise more revenue for the city? but more specifically on the Upper West Side, as well as generally raise more revenue for the city?
So, you know, a preface to this, of course, is that it's exactly the anti-city federal election system that's preventing us from getting the aid that we need at a time to handle a crisis that's not of our own making. So we need to change the federal election system in the meantime. And as to protecting small businesses, let me say. It's actually a wonderful example of a problem that's been plaguing us for many decades that our council members have been trying and failing to solve since I was a kid in the seventies. Because the existing tools we have are inadequate. And it's one that my proposal for democratic resource allocation is a beautiful revolutionary solution for. Let me mention particularly the larger problem of how to preserve beloved local businesses on the Upper West Side whose value to the neighborhood far exceeds the profit that they can make. And then are replaced with nothing often. Vacant properties and sometimes other businesses that we really don't need as much. I have an interactive demonstration on my website that applies democratic resource allocation to exactly this issue, specifically as to our Upper West Side storefronts. And which would also address our vacant storefronts. And I urge you to try it out. It's a voting system that would be open all the time to everyone in the district that collects our views about which kinds of businesses or other storefronts should get some extra help and which have it too easy as it is. And the results would be tallied periodically and given effect through the property tax system. So like a lot of other things that have been discussed tonight, it would also require state approval, but it would be a city system. The tax rate would be reduced on storefront property that's used for purposes that Upper West Siders voted to support and increased for property uses for purposes that we voted to discourage, for example, vacant storefronts or other less valuable businesses. And the net change in total taxes brought in would be zero. And as a result, it would also be a way of saving scarce resources, because it wouldn't actually require an increase in revenue to save businesses. I think that's an adequate answer to that one.
Thank you so much for your response. My next question for you is, how would you handle the practice of member deference within the city council, particularly in relation to the U-LERT processes, but also more generally?
I think there's a place for looking to members' expertise in their own neighborhoods. But I do agree with comprehensive planning. We need a plan for the city based on principles that apply to the whole city. This is actually another one that could be made even better by applying a democratic element to it that would allow New Yorkers to figure together what kinds of things we want to support. For example, perhaps we would like to support affordable housing at the expense perhaps of buildings full of colossal apartments for billionaires and other things that we decide aren't as socially valuable. So that's another example of a kind of planning that could just be improved.
Thank you so much for that response. My next question for you is, how would you improve both public transportation and open space to move us away from a car-centric New York City and Upper West Side?
I favor more and more open space. And I think that what we're seeing is that it's very popular to open up more space. I think someone earlier in the, in the program made the point that this is one of these examples of something that we, a lot of people kind of felt like maybe we should be doing more of for a long time, but that we're finally doing more of because of a kind of necessity. And now hopefully we'll keep doing more of it. And I certainly support that. I, it's more things outside are better for business, better for our health. I support more bicycles and more support for safe cycling. I've been cycling in the city since I was a little kid and around the city since I was a teenager. I support more investment in reliable, accessible subway service. I support more investment in select bus service. And at a larger point, I think is, I think the city should have more control over the public transportation system. So that's something that would require also state involvement, but I think it would be to everyone's benefit.
Okay. Um, I just have time for one last question. So my final question for you is something that you've touched on before, but I hope that you'll be able to go a little bit more into. What would you do to reimagine and redevelop our commercial districts and vacant storefronts on the Upper West Side?
Yeah. I mean, this is, again, I would really urge you and everyone to check out my website on this exact issue. Davidgold.nyc. What I support is Upper West Siders deciding together through a voting system that's open all the time, what kind of neighborhood uses we find most valuable and shifting resources in accordance with our decisions so that we can shape our neighborhood gradually and cumulatively over time.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much for that answer. Unfortunately, that is all the time we have for Q and A. So thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
And for all of our audience participants, that is the end of our program for the evening. Thank you so much for everyone who is here for the city council candidates. And if you've been here all the way since the borough president candidates, thank you for staying all this time. We, as well as a huge thank you to all the candidates for joining us tonight. We really appreciate that as well.